Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backhand Club Study Session for August 20th, 2025. If you want to find out more information about our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, we're ready to roll. Today, the triad is going to be me and Eric. I see Eric is here. He's continuing from last week and then Bill Spruce is also going to play. And I just want to say that if anybody wants to give it a try in future weeks to be on the team that is playing the white checkers, you just let me know. I'll be happy to put you on that team and you can try your hand at picking the moves for that side. Okay, I've got the slider open because the first play is a cube decision. The red team is on roll. And do I have it open? I think it's open, ready to vote. Yep. You could vote right now if you'd like on this cube decision. So you're the red team deciding on whether or not you want to cube. And you guys can unmute yourself if you want to talk about the cube. I had muted everyone for the intro.
I'd vote it for double. I like the fact that we can close the nine point with either a four or a two. Of course, if we get both four and two, we could make the four point instead.
Right?
Which is probably the better play. And I don't know, five-four makes a four point, five-two makes it. There's just, you know, quite a few really good rolls. I don't know that it's so, so many that we're gonna necessarily lose our market. But I like it. I think it's a good double.
Well, losing your market is necessary for having a cube. If you can't lose your market, you don't have a cube.
No, no, I don't think we have that many rolls.
We don't have that many market losers.
I do think that, I think if we get two-four and the white then doesn't hit us, I think we have lost our market.
Okay, all right, we got a few votes in. Yep.
I'll go with the double.
All right.
We've just got too many opportunities.
Okay, it looks like all the votes are for a cube. And so now... All right, so now it's on me and Eric and Bill to decide, do we want to take this?
How much, how long do I think about it?
How much, what did you say?
Last week you said, you know, mochi and think about it even though you don't really need to think about it.
Ah, yeah, he always uses his delay time. So are you saying that you're ready to take this right away?
Sure, we've got some threats of our own and we've got an anchor. We can take this cube.
Okay.
Yes, and the race isn't very, they have dire.
I'm not sure if it was a double or not. I know it's, this is one of those situations where I personally don't know if it was a double, but I can tell you I think it's a take, so.
Okay.
Of course, I could be very wrong as usual.
We all could. Yeah, I see everything you're seeing. I'm also seeing that anchor is not that hot, right?
It's not awesome.
It's not awesome, but I'll tell you what is awesome. We got the rack. And so when this gets turned around, that's good offense. So yeah.
I mean, we in one roll could easily have a four prime of our own.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm ready to take this. So you guys all want to take it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
What's the worst that could happen besides getting gamed?
Getting gamed.
Yeah. All right, let's take a peek. All right, very narrow double, super easy take. And Bill, this is pretty much what you were saying, right?
Yeah, we didn't want to snatch it out of the air, so we kind of talked about it for a minute.
Yeah. I mean, have you ever reached over and grabbed the cube before your opponent has even set it down on the surface?
Yeah, I think it's rude to do, but I think I've done it.
Rude, but you want to, right?
Okay.
All right, six-three to play for the red team.
Not their best.
I'm gonna go with the hit on the fifteen.
Yeah, hit, 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 hit.
Like it.
Okay, yeah, let me, I want to set up the, setting up the slide. Okay. So twenty-four to fifteen, you got another play, you could make the three point.
Yep.
Those seem like the two natural choices.
I think we want to take away one of his rolls, one of his dice.
I agree.
And Stephen says, need to get out of there as soon as possible. Okay, the slider's open, you can vote. Okay, we got a handful of votes. All of them are to hit. So.
Yay.
Okay, let's do it. We're gonna hit. Okay. I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's right. Yeah. I tried to tempt you with making the three point. It didn't work.
Okay, back to double, double whopper to do so, huh?
Yep. All right, danced. All right, now you got a double six to play. I'm reconsidering that cube now.
Yeah, I like to double again.
I'll go fifteen to nine, then two into three, and then eleven to five.
Okay. All right, so fifteen to three, nine to three, eleven to five. Okay.
Nine to three twice.
Nine to three twice, right?
Fifteen to nine, nine to three twice.
He can get three, nine, three means the same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Eleven to, eleven to five.
Eleven to five is the last one.
Right.
Maybe no blocks.
Any other, any other plays that I should have in here, or is that the?
I guess I can't imagine.
Well, there's a thought about fifteen to nine, eleven to five, and thirteen to seven twice.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak for them because it's their turn, Jason, but I think I've seen a position like this.
It has some merit, yeah, sure.
I think I've seen a position like this and fifteen-nine, thirteen-seven twice should be in the mix.
It should be in the mix, yeah.
I don't think you want to make the three point and put that gap in your prime.
Okay, so here, let's, let's, let's look at both of these plays. So here's fifteen-nine, nine to three twice, eleven to five. Okay, so that's the first one.
Yep.
I'll be right there.
Fifteen-nine, thirteen-seven twice, eleven-nine.
That's great.
Oh, so you like this one better?
I do.
We got nine checkers to get in.
You too.
That's a lot of rolls. And if, if in the process, you guys get out. I don't know, I just like keeping those, that thirteen as a backstop.
Yeah.
The advantage, the advantage of making the three points, though, is that we take out one more entry point.
Right.
For the one on the bar. If you didn't have one on the bar, I would agree with the other play, but now I don't know, I wonder whether it's wise to make the three points.
I think I saw a position like this recently. And in this kind of game, deliberately leaving that gap in your prime by making the three when you don't have to, because you can't make, you know, instead, and leaving that gap on the four in something like this position is a mistake.
Yeah.
I think it is, but.
And I think we want them to come in with that checker so we can balance them. Give them more options to come in, bounce on them.
Clear the thirteen now and stack them all up with lots of flexibility and we'll be forever back there.
Right, you get extra flexibility with spares on the seven point and you don't have the midpoint to clear anymore. It seems like there's a lot to go for. Okay, the slider's open, you can vote.
I mean, I prefer you leave us, I prefer you make the three point, but hey, I'm the plane for the other team.
Yeah, I think I prefer that as well, but I'm not either playing, so I might be a devil's advocate here.
The gap on the four would leave us shot, shot, would leave you shot leaving opportunities. Anyway, I'm just sorry, I'm not trying to sell nothing. I'm, I'm just, I'm not very happy right now because first of all, Jason fanned in the first place to get us in this spot.
Yes, ridiculous.
Okay, so this is the one that's won the vote. So let's make that play, take a quick peek. And they're very close, right? So this is one of these positions, it's hard to really make a mistake either way. Fourteen millipoints, I don't worry too much about that. It's not a huge mistake.
Okay. You know, I had an insight just now that this hive mind approach is interesting because it's the same concept as when you put like beans in a jar, like thousands of beans, and you ask people to, to guess how many beans are in the jar and
Right.
You got wild guesses, but then when you take the average of it, it's usually very close to the real answer.
That's exactly right. So, so yeah. You know, individually, you know, there are no grandmasters here, but collectively, you can play at a grandmaster level, which I think is really fascinating. Okay, we got a six-one to play, so we're coming in here and now I don't know. I don't, not sure how much this matters.
It probably doesn't matter much, but I would play thirteen to seven. We don't need three checkers on the midpoint right now.
Yeah. Ah, I'm, I'm fine with that line of thinking. Eric, what do you, what do you think?
Hmm, can you go back and let me examine before you moved?
Okay, so here's the one and now you have a six that you need to play.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I like Bill's, I like Bill's argument about we don't need three checkers there. Okay.
And it's more flexible, right? We, you know, it's just builders and flexibility.
By the way, they have some shot numbers. Okay, so if they roll six-one, six-six, maybe not six-six, six-one for sure. Five-one, you know, there's a little bit of awkwardness on that side, so. Okay, yeah. A bigger difference than I would have thought. Okay, three-one for the hive mind, probably.
Make the four point.
Just make the four point. All right, we won't, we won't vote on that. That looks pretty easy. Okay, four and two. The first question is, do we want to step up?
I never really know, Jason, so you're asking the wrong guy, so.
Yeah.
But I think that's the first, I do think that's the first question you have to answer because if we do, then that dictates the rest of the play.
Right. All right, so what are the benefits of stepping up? It's possible, possible that they don't hit us there and we can make a better anchor.
There's only one in four, there's a one in four hundred and fifty thousand chance that we don't get pointed out right there.
We are coming under the gun, as McGree says, so I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay.
We are coming under the range of the sixteen and seventeen points, so.
So if we're not stepping up, then I would, I think, seven to three. Six to four, just to spread checkers out, I don't know.
I think that's a little deep. I'm just not, I'm not a big fan of six to four. I think you could, you could talk me into seven to three, but I think you may not.
Why not? I mean, it flexibilizes us to make a stronger home board later and the six, the six spare and the six has nowhere else to go except making the three points, so it helps make the three point, I guess. But we do waste two pips to save gamins later, but.
I think you actually reduce your flexibility a little bit when you play six to four because now you're, you're dooming that checker to only be able to be used with ones and twos to make the three point.
But Jason, what else would we do with an ace? Kind of makes our ace good because there's nothing else we can do with them.
I can always use an ace later by playing six to five and smoothing my distribution in a more natural way. Okay, I got another play I just want to throw out there. What about thirteen to seven?
Oh, yeah. All right.
They leave a shot when they roll six-two. That's something to consider. We could get a shot right now. I think that's the only way they leave a shot.
I think I could live with thirteen to seven.
Okay, now don't make me twist your arm. Eric?
No, yeah, whatever you guys decide. I'm neutral on this one.
I'm going to be willing to bet none of these are terribly far apart because of our equity can't be much to begin with.
That's right. All right, let's, let's do this play and they'll roll six-two now. And let's take a look. Oh, look at that. Again, bigger differences than I would have expected.
Where's six to four? Oh, it's over there on three-point-three, on thirty-three millipoints.
We talked about seven-three-six-four. There it is. Thirty-seven millipoints back. Team size error. Okay, three-two for the red team.
There's no move that would involve one to three moving up to the edge of the prime.
You mean twenty-four, twenty-two?
Twenty-four, twenty-two, correct.
Yeah, how far do I have to scroll to see one of those? There it is.
Wow, interesting.
That would have been bad.
That would have been bad. Okay, three-two for the red team.
Move two in.
Oh, okay, how? There's a couple ways to do that.
Exactly.
Seven to four, I guess eight to six.
Okay. Six, seven, four.
I think we should consider eight to five and six to four, only bringing one in.
Eight, five, six, four, okay.
Certainly worth, worth a look anyway.
Yep.
But you're only getting one checker in that way.
Why are we in a hurry to get a minute?
Well, that's true too.
I want to play it as safe as possible. Whatever, whatever the safest move is, that's what I want to do, but I don't know what that safest move is. But I suspect that eight-five-six-four could be the safest move. Should certainly be worth a look.
Okay, any other plays that are under consideration?
Nine to seven and nine to six.
Ah, clear the back. Okay, nine, seven, nine, six.
That's reasonable too.
Yeah.
Okay, I got that in there, so the slider's open. You could vote now, wanted to. I'll play though, right? I mean, I don't think this is obvious what to do. I think I, I think I have a sense of what I would do.
Yeah, me too. I'm gonna wait to comment after they.
Yeah, yeah, me, yeah, me too. Hey, the votes are coming in. Bill Spruce, you got an idea of what you would do here?
That's not my problem.
Yeah. I'll comment after.
That's a very good point.
Yeah, I use the not my problem a lot, especially with doubling decisions where, you know, I'm agonized over the cube and finally I just send it over and then I just lean back in my chair. Yeah, not my problem anymore.
Exactly.
Hey, we got four votes. Anybody else? We've got the, it's tied right now. Okay, we need one more vote to break the tie. Who hasn't voted yet?
I voted already.
I voted.
You voted.
How many are on this other side?
It's two, it's two to two right now, so I don't know.
But how many people are on the hive anyway? If anyone voted, how many could vote? Seven, eight, nine?
N minus three.
Exactly, and what is N?
Well, there's eleven people in the room right now.
Okay, so it's eight, thank you.
Okay, I don't think Tom is really participating right now.
Okay.
Okay, I think the vote just changed and it is, okay, we're gonna go with eight-five-six-four. Eight-five-six-four won the vote. Okay, Eric, what was your idea? What?
I would never have done, I wouldn't have done nine twice because I wouldn't clear the nine because then sixes will screw the red team over because sixes will be forced to hit the blood on the one and leave a checker exposed, so.
It might be covered.
It might, but it might not.
Six-four is six-three, you know, double six, they'll work. I mean, it's not all the sixes are bad, only some.
Well, yeah.
But yeah, that's my reason for, that's my reason for keeping the nine point also. I can play a six, okay.
Eric, what would you have played?
Well, I would clear, I would move the spare on the eight because I think the eight is the point we should clear first here. So the problem that I just mentioned doesn't happen. But yeah, so then the two, well, I could play eight to five and then the two could be seven, oh no, six to four is fine, yeah. So that play is, that they chose is fine, yeah.
And Bill Spruce, what's your play?
Eight, I mean, I would clear, yeah, eight, I would get the extra spare off the eight point like you've done. Eight, so eight-six. Eight-six, and what would that leave us? A three. Could you put it back to the original?
Yes, nine to seven, nine to seven is also a fine deuce.
I think eight, I would play eight-six-seven-four.
Look at Jeff.
Thinking about it now, I, I think I'd play eight, eight-five, nine-seven, pre-clearing the nine.
Leaving a lot of nine?
Well, only one-six and two-six hit us there.
Correct, that's right.
Yeah. So it's not that dangerous, so it might be, but I have to think about it a little more thoroughly. I didn't think about it before, so yeah.
All right, well, my play is to clear, my play is to clear the nine point. All right, let's, let's find out. Oh.
Three, good lord.
Three, yeah.
What?
That's a, oh yeah, we have a six prime.
Double?
Well, you got a six, you got a full prime. Where's, where's my play?
Let's try to have a full prime.
Oh, boy. All right, my play's not good.
Okay, so late chosen, yeah.
Okay. All right, double twos, not great.
That's interesting because they, they have a four prime. It's not like we can freely leave plots to be hit in front of our six prime because we might brush, like, have, be forced to crunch the prime if we roll something like one-five, one-six, one-four, as long as we come in and then we can't jump.
Yeah, I've seen that happen very often. You think you have a six prime, so you let yourself be hit and then you come in and you can get out from your opponent's home.
Okay, double, double deuces to play for the white team. I'm kind of thinking just, just shift and make the three point?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, Jason, can you get the XG ID from the last position so I can check later? Why the hell eight-three is a good move? I could ask people later on Facebook or something.
Okay, I just, I just put it in, I just put it in the chat for you.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Uh, Bill, you said yes to making the three point?
Uh, it's, yeah.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, sure.
Great, let's make the three. What could go wrong? Oh.
Whoa, just what we didn't want.
Eight, I love it. You kidding me? Nine to three twice, seven to one twice, you're on the bar. We got a five-point board. You only hit us with two-fives. Let's bring it on. Let's go.
Yeah.
I want to read, I want to redouble if I can.
Okay, so.
Once I agree with Bill.
Once, thank you. Well, first way, nine to three once is forced, as the seven to one twice is forced. The only question is what to do with the fourth one. And it can't, it can't possibly be right to go seven to one, give you a direct three from the bar. That's ludicrous.
All right, so that seems, that seems like a good argument. All right, so let's not vote on that. That seems clear.
That's the play.
Okay, oh, we didn't hit, incredible.
He didn't get two-five, he got two-fives. Five-three. Well, interesting.
Can come in. Oh, we've got five.
I guess it's eight-three and seven-four. Pay off to two-six only.
Yeah, agree.
No, I think we should clear the eight and leave the seven exposed like before.
Okay, let's look at the two play. So here's the five for sure. Okay, so if you could do this. Okay, four, this.
That's correct. Okay, let's vote.
Shoot. All right, hang on.
So eight-three is forced, correct?
Well, it's not literally, but reasonably forced because the only other legal five is six to one.
Oh, six to one, sure, that's right.
Yeah, so, right, could, could I suggest this play?
If it goes six to five, you gotta go six to three also.
Yeah.
You can't give a direct shot from the roof. That's, that's absurd.
All right, so the slider's open.
I see the things from last time. Oh, never mind. I hit click and then I had options. Okay, thank you, never mind.
All right, the votes are all for eight-three-eight-five. And yeah, XG likes that play. Okay, we'll hit, we'll hit this time. Oh, we missed. Incredible.
Well, it's not, it's not that rare to miss a one open spot twice. I mean, what's incredible about that?
Oh, I do that all the time. If you're gonna, if you complain about the dice, you should do it, yeah, in a sarcastic way, like, you know. Right. Like when I have a one-point board and my opponent comes in, it's incredible. This guy always comes in.
Yeah, I agree. Seven to one would, that would be my move.
I guess my, my sarcasmometer is broken today, so, yeah.
Okay, any other?
Looks good, seven to one looks good, yeah. Yep.
What about seven to five, four off?
Seven, five, four off.
Has some merit. But I like the seven to one better because it got even, even on the top two.
Right.
Instead of even odd.
All right, this will leave shots on six-four. The others, no.
Well, the other one may leave a shot with six-four also.
Uh, let's see. Yeah, the other one does leave a shot. Okay, so there must be some other play where you.
Well. Double six is followed by six-five leaves a shot this way. The other way it doesn't.
Yeah.
It's as an example.
Right, yeah.
Is there an opportunity for a gammon here?
Of course.
And if there is, then I think we want to peel checkers off.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you have to have, you have to, percentage to win a gammon, I believe, has to be double that of losing the game. And I don't believe that's true by peeling off one checker here versus zero.
Okay, the slider is open, you can vote.
Understand, I click on it, it doesn't change.
It should change automatically.
You also have to hit send. Bill, you have to click on the thing and you have, you have to click on your choice and then you have to hit the green send button at the bottom.
Wait a minute. I don't have a green send button, wait. It's all this time I've never voted. I thought I was voting. See a send button.
I take no responsibility for the disenfranchisement of Bill Powell.
Correct, nor should you.
Okay, the vote's tied right now.
I like, I like seven to one. I don't seem to know how to vote. I can't find the send button.
All right, then we're gonna use you as the tiebreaker and we're gonna, we're gonna make that play. I think this play is a lot better.
Yeah.
Uh, and, oh, I'm wrong, seven-three.
Seven and three, five-three is better. Wow, really?
All right, small differences. Okay, can't hit anything now, so. All right, now double. All right, now double ones.
We actually rolled double ones here? Okay, well, jeez. I like to go safe, I believe safety is the best, so I like six to four twice. Take off nothing.
Okay, and.
I agree.
Any other choices? Where's, where's Adam Rikner with pulling three checkers off?
I think, I think we should do, take one off, take one off, six to five.
Three checkers, Jason.
Take one off and four to two.
I'm sorry, Donald, can you say that again?
I said.
You can't go, you can't go four to two.
Twice, four to three and take bare one off.
That's also very reasonable.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to say it again, Donald, I missed it.
Sorry, six to five twice, four to three ones and one off from one.
Got it. Okay, and Stephen put in the chat six.
Five to four to have even on the five.
Stephen put in the chat, six to five twice, five to four, one off. Four, one off.
Then just odd on the highest one, double five, double six, both leave shot.
On that last one, yeah.
If you play that way.
Six to five twice, four to three, one off.
Okay, shots, huh?
Even, even, even. Hmm. Two for those guys and even, yeah, that's actually not so bad.
Okay, the Slido's open.
Jason, we're gonna have to go to ranked choice voting.
I know, you're right.
Adam would not do this.
Adam definitely would not.
Funny.
Okay, uh, all right, looks like the votes are in, six to five twice, four to three, one off, okay, that's what has won the vote.
That's funny.
And, yeah, they're all pretty close, that's interesting.
And that's the number one.
That's the one, yeah, the number one, okay. Still can't come in, all right, three one to play.
Make the five, oh, wait, no, uh.
Five to four, three off.
Yes, agree.
Okay, five to four, three off.
Just gives the best distribution of the checkers.
Yeah, but we've got a, um, a doubles problem here. Double five, double sixes leaves a shot with that. What about four, one, four? Oh, wait, sorry. Yeah, four, one.
Can't go, can't go five to two.
No, but we can go four, one, four, three.
And leave a, leave a hole on the four?
No.
No way, no, that can't be.
It's an option, I'm not saying we should do it, I said it's an option.
Oh, sure. Well, for that matter, you know, so is five to one an option? Don't believe it's right, but certainly a, a legal play.
Okay, the Slido's ready.
I gotta vote.
Thank you.
It's almost like Jap, Chibi, GBT is writing these Slido comments.
Um, I can neither confirm nor deny. Okay, three votes in for five to four, three off, that looks like a nice play, good distribution. Yeah, you know, somebody pointed out that, you know, you're odd on the high points, so double sixes, double fives, you'll, uh, you'll leave a shot. On the other hand, those rolls do rip four checkers off, so it's not all bad.
Yeah, also give, improves the gammon chances.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, wow, everything else is a whopper.
Hmm. A little surprised by that. Five, one was actually the second best play, I was, I, I kind of said that one in jest.
All right, the good guys finally get to make a move.
Yay.
Comes right in.
Yeah, comes right in.
Comes right in, as he, as he should, he's favored.
Well, I don't know, how about just, I don't know what to do here. Somebody wake up Bill Spruce.
It's, it's been.
Bill got a good nap in while you guys were bearing in. I don't think it matters much, how about we just?
Doesn't. We have no equity in this game right now, so it doesn't matter what you do.
All right, so, is this all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, we'll do it. Yeah, bar seventeen, yeah, see, all these are the same, so Bill's right, there's no equity here, so we're, we're getting creamed here. All right, three one to play for the, uh,
Again.
The hot, for the hive mind, yeah.
Three off, five to four.
Yeah, agree.
Yep, sure.
Oh, wait, 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 sorry, oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Even, 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 and even.
Okay, um, I will point out also, uh, maybe, maybe this is a, a red herring, but there's no checker on the bar anymore, so you could just rip two checkers off.
Right, I was thinking about that, but that still leaves us vulnerable to the double fives, double sixes.
Exactly.
And even I'm not that crazy. Do we have to vote, or are we just doing it?
Yeah, you can, let's vote, I, I got it open now.
What's the other option?
Uh, five, five to one and take off nothing, that's, that's an option.
Five, oh, five to one, oh.
I'm not doing it, but it's an option. It's, hey, it's better than.
Now he's gotta redo the whole Slido thing.
No, I get, I don't have to redo it, I can, I just have to.
I'll give you, I'll give you a worse play than five to one.
Uh, I could easily.
Four to one, four to three.
Yeah, that is a worse play. All right, uh, nobody wants to rip two checkers off, so five to four, three off.
Yes.
Seems pretty reasonable. Okay, there we go, and hey, ripping two is really close.
Only four miller points worse, huh?
How do you like them apples?
Wow.
Okay.
Well, it helps the doubles.
It, yeah.
I mean, the gammon, sorry, the gammon.
Right. Okay, five, four for the good guys, I think we should hang on to the anchor for now, um.
I, I have so much difficulty with those decisions, when to hang on to the anchor, when to try to save the gammon, to like to run a checker to save. But I guess we don't really save the gammon when we have so many checkers that need to be born in already, so I guess, yeah, let's just.
Yeah, all right, so here, we could do, we can do a crude measure by counting how many crossovers we need to get off the gammon. So all the checkers out here, they need three crossovers, so this is six, these are two each, that's ten, eleven. And then, once you get all the checkers, then you need one more bear, uh, crossover to bear off, so we actually need twelve checkers to, um, twelve crossovers to bear off, so it's really close right now, so these decisions matter a lot.
So it's really, uh, you compare it with the number of checkers that the opponent still needs to bear off, and that's, that's why, that's why it's really close, twelve checkers, twelve, twelve, uh.
Yeah, and, and again, this is a, this is a very crude measure, right, I, I wouldn't, uh, there, there's some caveats to all this. Um.
Hmm. Yeah, so let's do nine.
Twelve crossovers to get our men off.
Right.
So let's, let's do nine to five and seventeen, twelve, so we get two crossovers.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I'm okay with this, Bill Spruce?
I was kind of, I, I don't know, I, I think.
Isn't thirteen to nine a better four than nine to five?
Uh, putting two together on the same point, I don't think so.
Yeah, stay one, I, I don't know why we would stay, look.
You don't waste a pick.
I would run now, and I'll tell you why. Stay one, roll. Sorry, I, dr- dr- drama with the dogs. Staying one more roll isn't gonna help, and we have to live within the next two or three rolls, or we're gonna get gammon.
Yeah.
I think if we leave now, we run the risk of getting pointed on with, uh, three, two, 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 uh, one, one.
He needs run, he needs move both of them.
Oh, you wanna get them both out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have any, do we have any market losers in the next roll or two?
Uh, I think you're, you don't wanna use that term, do you mean, do you mean shots that you might leave?
Yeah, I mean, like, so what, what would have to roll like a six, one, or, no, that would be fine.
I don't think you guys could leave a shot in the next three rolls.
Okay.
It's hard to tell, but certainly the next two are perfectly safe.
All right, I'll give you, I'll give you another argument though, Bill, which is, uh, sometimes it's not about giving, creating shots, sometimes it's just about making things awkward for the, your opponent, and when you hang out there, they kind of have to tiptoe around your anchor. So they can't just immediately start bearing off with threes, so you slow them down right now, by, by hanging out there.
We're gonna slow them down so much, we're gonna get gammon, I think.
Right.
I, I, I think, I, I, I think we're slowing ourselves down too, I honestly think, and normally, Jason, I would say stay one or two more rolls, but in this case, I think, I think we're just gonna cost.
I don't, I, I don't think we're really slowing ourselves down, because we have three checkers still to, to bear in, so we could just use the pips on those, so we're not slowing us down. So.
I, I wanna stay, I wanna stay in, I wanna stay, I wanna be a pest right now.
I don't think either of the plays is really gonna matter, running with.
I don't think so either, okay, so let's just do, let's do, do Eric's play, which was this, this is fine, I, I have no problem with this.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to argue about it, I was just saying, I don't see possibly how they could leave a shot in three more rolls, and by then, we will have had to left, or we're gonna leave, or we're gonna get gammoned, so. That's why I was just thinking, you may as well leave now, and race is faster, but I get it, the, the pips are pips, it doesn't make any difference where they come from, cause we gotta cross them all anyways.
Yeah, but it, but if, if, uh, yeah, if we stay now and, and don't leave one checker on the twenty-three, then we are safe from pointing rolls, uh, uh, like four pointing roses, as far as I can tell.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
All right, so are we okay with this? We just do this?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Seventeen, eight is probably the play I would have made over the board, but all of these are real close, so I, I, now, let's scroll down and find the plays that, that leave.
Leave.
It, it still doesn't want us to stay interesting.
There you go. I think a lot of this is about being a nuisance.
Wow.
Wow, it's.
Hard to believe it's that big of a deal, though, because.
Huge whopper.
Yeah.
Cause you're losing, look, you're losing how many, like twenty percent, uh, winning chances by, by, uh,
Twelve percent.
Twelve, twelve percent, okay. Yeah, wow.
Okay, two, one for the, for the, uh, for the hive mind.
You know, Jason, we'd, we'd like to be able to get checkers off, you know, Jason, when you roll these dice.
I can't hear you, Adam.
I say four, four to one, actually, here.
Okay, four to one.
Five, five, three, one off.
Three, one off.
Oh, uh.
So there's one role that we avoided them bearing off a checker, because if we left, they otherwise would have, uh, borne off a checker now, so.
You could do five.
And we would have closed our, we would have closed our gap as well.
You could do five, three, four, three.
Okay, five, three, four, three, all right, I got all those in there, I got Stephen's five, three, five, four also.
That leaves us vulnerable to a six, three.
Yeah. Okay, the Slido's open, let's vote. Uh, this is close. Uh, right now tied between four, one, and five, three, five, four, okay, there we go, four, one has jumped out into the lead, let's just do that. It's not the play I would have made, I would have played five, three, one off, for better distribution. Oh, lit up red.
Uh-oh.
Oh, double whopper.
Wow. Wow.
Hmm.
Here's, here's the play, this is the play I would have made. Now, one of the things that this does, when you play five, three, one off, now you got spares on three points, that actually makes it a little bit harder for us to just jump out with one checker, because now you have three builders to be able to attack with.
It's.
Hmm.
I don't like that.
That's what I liked, five, three, one off.
There you go, all right.
All right, that's a lousy roll.
We can be wrong once in a while.
Yeah, once in a while.
Sure.
Uh, oh, this stinks. Uh, I don't know, thirteen, ten? We could spread them out here, but that also wastes a tip.
So shouldn't we try to figure out why it's such a blunder to do four, one, cause I'm, I'm, I don't see it yet?
Uh.
Because, I mean, there's no role that leaves a shot the next turn, is there? Like, if we roll six, six, two, where the, well, you can just do five, three, and, uh, like five off and five, three.
I actually think the answer's really simple, it's just getting a checker off. Um, getting a checker off is, is helpful, or you're, you're trying to win a gammon here, and.
Proves the gammon.
Proves the gammon chance, the better distribution of having, putting a spare on the three point means you're gonna have fewer awkward numbers in the future.
Yeah, but, but then you give a shot with, uh, six, five, by four.
No, five, four is okay.
If, if we did the other one.
Only six, five is.
If it was just about taking one off, then five, three, four, three would also be a double blunder, but it's not. So there's something else here.
This has, this has good distribution. This has good distribution. This is awkward, okay, uh, twos and threes might play awkwardly in the future.
Yep, yep.
I, I really think that's.
And I think it's two or three, it couldn't, it could be awkward in two more rolls, two or three more rolls.
Yeah, right.
And these guys are slow rolling it so much that they're not having to run away.
Well, at the moment, we can't run away.
That's what I mean, you're slow rolling it, right?
Yeah. Okay, after this, we'll, we'll do one more vote and then we'll stop for the night, um.
So, Jason, is there some, um, conversation, now that you are slow rolling it and can, you can put some more pressure on us, is there an argument to be made for your six, four move?
Sure, I mean, I think this, this could be argued.
Because now you don't want, you, you don't wanna cross over too quick now, because you, there's a, with the awkwardness of our board, you could get a shot at some point.
Oh, I see, you want one less crossover on purpose, okay, sure, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna slow down on purpose, though, because a, a big part of this is saving the gammon. Uh, and, and so, I, I, I get what you're saying, I mean, you could do this, and you could, you could make a play like this and say, okay, well, I still got a crossover. But now, you know, these crossovers, these checkers on the twelve point, they gotta go a long way, you know, not all crossovers are created equal, right?
Right, yeah.
If you stay on the thirteen, you got three crossovers.
Yeah, so.
So that's, yeah.
I think I wanna do this.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that, all right.
I, I think it was a mistake not to get a crossover, so.
Yeah, see, this is bad for us.
This is bad, okay, this is exact, I think this is the scenario that, uh, points out why the two, one on the last roll was a mistake.
Oh.
Now, now what are you gonna do? We can't leave a shot, right?
No, you gotta rip, take it off the five and go four to one.
Four to one.
Now.
Anything else is ludicrous.
Does everybody see that this position is horrible? For us, really bad.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Almost as bad as you can get, and so, I think that's why, but I, I, I agree, I think that's the only thing you can do, you don't wanna leave a shot, right?
No.
No, don't leave a shot on purpose, we might get super lucky, we might roll five, one, or six, one, next turn, or four, one, and re- repair this issue.
That's right. Okay, um.
Ooh, that's what we're looking for.
Hmm.
Six, five, oh, these are tough, I don't know what to do with these.
You, you, you don't, um, wanna get picked and passed, so, so the, you, you both come in.
You don't wanna run, you don't wanna run a thing.
Six to one, you could go six, one.
Uh, how about, how about this play?
There you go, that's better.
Hmm, wastes pips, but then conserves a six in case we don't wanna run next turn either.
It, it also is better, better distribution, because if we do this, we only have spares on two points. If we do this, we have, we have spares on three points, and then another checker on the seven, that is kind of useful.
Hmm. Yeah, but do we really need the, the? Yeah, but do we really need the, the flexibility now, because?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we do need the flexibility. We're gonna, we're gonna hit a shot, we're gonna hit a shot real quick here. And we're gonna wanna be flexible for when they enter.
Excuse me, you're gonna get a shot. You may not hit the shot.
No, we're hitting a shot.
Who are you, Steph Curry?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Bill Spruce, how say you?
I like your flexibility idea.
Okay, alright, I think we're gonna stop here. It's five, five minutes to six. This is a good place to stop. We'll save the awkwardness of this position for next week.
I'm very anxious about this, Jason, I don't know.
Okay. Alright, um, I'm going to mute everyone real quick and then do a sign off. Thanks, everybody, for joining us for the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, thanks, everyone.